I'll leave my job, she will worry. Here's the answers, I got it for you, go sit down. And I'll give you the right one.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Julie, roll call please. Present.
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 Here.
Here.
We have six present and Counselor Sanchez informed me that she would be working this evening and unable to get off work. I will entertain a motion to excuse her absence.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to excuse Counselor Sanchez's absent, please Julie, roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes, that's six eyes, no nays with Counselor Sanchez's absence. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Please notice there's a few items within that and let me know if you have any questions. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Can we have a roll call, please Julie?
Yes.
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 Yes, that's six eyes with no nays and one absence. Moving on, recognition of visitors and hearing petitions, are there, is there anybody that would like to come forward? Nope, not at this time. There is no old business, we have new business on the agenda. The first item on the agenda is request for council action, the Mahler WRF interim improvement project, increase contingency. Do we have a staff report for that?
We do, thank you Mayor, good evening councillors. So if you remember back in February, we brought three contracts to you. And so tonight we're bringing back an RCA to increase contingency for one of those contracts. The contract is for Bodie Construction. We issued that back on February fourteenth, their contract was roughly about eight hundred and forty thousand dollars. We had an eighty-four thousand dollar, ten percent contingency with that. We processed the first change order for road widening on the south fence line to accommodate fire vehicle access, which was a comment that came out of the review. And so we widened that road and we did in a change order for to accommodate that. We have a second change order that has to do with, if you remember, we talked about extending metal on the screw press and that that device got bigger. And so now we have to do some work underneath that and also some support work. The change order came in for that and also some mixing zone equipment, some mixing equipment that goes in the new sledge blend tank. That amount for that request is sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty-four cents. That request from Bodie Construction exceeded their ten percent reservoir, I guess reserve that we had set aside for them. Staff is asking for an additional seventy thousand of contingency funds. They would be using the the state lottery funds and ARPA funds. And so there is funds to do this increase, but also I want to point out Baker Silo finished today. And there's roughly about a hundred K in contingencies on that contract. With that, we are recommending option number three, move to execute the procurement as requested.
Are there any questions from councillors? Okay. I will entertain a motion.
So moved is recommended.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second, Julie, would you please have a roll call?
Yes.
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 Yes, that's six eyes and one absence. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, request for council action radiator supply house economic development support. Is there a staff report on this?
So there is a staff report, however, we have Will Garrett here in the audience who can entertain any type of questions. Our understanding of this is that the Icebox Cook-Off is going to be coming to town. It looks like a fantastic event coming from Texas. I'm very excited to attend this and get to see this. But I would like to request, if you all are okay with it, having Will Garrett actually come up and give some additional information about that.
Yes, Will, would you come forward, please just remember to give your name and your address for the record, thank you. Yes. Thank you.
Is that on?
Yes.
Will Garrett, four eight nine fiftieth Avenue, proudly Sweet Home. We'll start off with last year, we're gonna go on the fly then, they're gone. Last year, we hosted for the first time publicly here in Sweet Home, the Icebox Cook-Off. Most of you are aware of that because you, thank you for partnering with it last year. It was a very successful event for a first year event. Six thousand roughly people over three days is what's estimated that was there. We we set records for the west coast as far as what was turned in from the barbecue side of it, the most steaks. Most burger turn-ins, the most dessert turn-in, so it hit some numbers that they were not even expecting. That comes from the SCA, the Steak Cooking Association, based out of Texas. The KCBS, which is also a sanctioned KCBS Kansas City Barbecue Association, it was the biggest payout and the most turn-ins on the west coast. So for a first year event, we had tremendous success. This year it has grown. It has been compared to as there's three major events in the US, Memphis in May, which starts this next week. The American Royal, which is in Kansas City. And the Jack, which is in Lynchburg, Tennessee, at Jack Daniels Distillery. We are being considered in the barbecue world as the west coast event compared to those. So that's, it's an honor for Sweet Home, for the west coast, that it's it's here. Frustrated, I don't have all my notes here in front of me. Apologize for that, bumped something walking up. They're gone. This year, the event is actually starting off in Lebanon and that was not at our decision. GNC Barbecue coordinated an actual barbecue cooking class that starts Thursday, which a lot of teams are coming in to Sweet Home, setting up on Wednesday instead of Thursday. So we'll see. It's coming in, they have brought in Hat Creek Q out of Houston to teach this class, it filled up immediately. So it's a nice thing for our extended community, then those people will move into Friday. For the event that is Thursday, Friday, they will be competing. And then it will be open to the public Friday and Saturday at our facility, SCA. Competition will be Friday. And Jesse Lee will finish off the night, Eddie Bill will be opening for Jesse Lee. Saturday, we open up with live fire cooking demonstrations, last year for those of you that were there. We saw all the animals that they did on the live fire demonstration. There was a TikTok, I was told, that went out of that mountain lion that was cooked of twenty-four million views that pointed back to Sweet Home and what happened there, so I thought that was a neat success. This year, it's been up, the government trappers brought in three mountain lions. Mark and Carla Hogan has donated a full beef to do a whole beef, which is never that we have known been done in the Pacific Northwest, it happens in Texas quite a bit. Do a whole beef like a like a pig. And then it'll be a People's Choice event on Saturday. And we'll finish off with Gabriel Cox out of Salem, opening for the Cause Band, which was requested to come back into the Harvest Festival, had cause and was very happy with them. We had them last year Saturday night, was thrilled with them. And then we bought the same package that my understanding City Sweet Home does for fireworks. And fireworks again will happen over Fourth of July weekend in Sweet Home for what I'm told is the second time. So that's kind of a special little event, I think, for Sweet Home to have on actual Fourth of July weekends. This Sunday is a sponsor's day only, so it's a private, it's the KCBS turn-in, it's for all the sponsors as we did last year. It's been, it was on Heath Riles, which you find his rubs in all Walmarts, actually. I think Greg has them in his store, the HR rubs. Heath Riles podcast last week, they were talking about competition in Sweet Home. Three or four weeks ago on Barbecue Ninjas podcast, they were talking about what's the one event that you don't want to miss this year? And Craig mentioned, Barbecue Ninja mentioned, there's one on the west coast you don't want to miss. So it's some nice things that are happening that the city of Sweet Home and the the community of Sweet Home was brought together. I just want to read real quick, just a couple quotes. This is from last year, this comes from Barbecue Ninja. I've been to barbecue events all over the country and I've never been to one that has a stronger connection to the community than the Icebox Cook-Off has to Sweet Home. From Graveyard Cars, Will Scott, who is there, said hands down the best barbecue event on the west coast. And Shag with Iron Resurrection, the TV show out of Austin, Texas, said the Sweet Home Icebox Cook-Off had all the barbecue comforts you could expect for an excellent day with friends, as well of tons of new dishes, I would never have imagined. I'm happy someone did because it's amazing, I can't wait to go again this year, Shag guaranteeing to them. So we had tremendous success our first year. Royal Oak, which you find at Walmart and O Depot, who sponsors Barbecue Ninja. Last year we had to pay to get him out, this year they're paying to send him out, so they saw value in it and what he did. It's interesting, I had, and I mentioned here, a few days ago, the mayor of Lebanon stepped in my office last week and he's already hearing and feeling it as rooms are starting to book up over at Bowser Falls. And he's hearing the buzz. So he wanted to know how he could be a part of it and I thought that was, that was a great thing for Sweet Home. So what I'm coming for is to see what kind of partnership that we can, we can have with the city again. I think it's best to, whatever that is, leave that in your hands. Try to make this process as smooth as we can. And build this to hopefully another great event for Sweet Home. As most of you know, this has nothing to do with radiators. We try to refer to it as the Icebox Cook-Off, it is separate, it's a total separate thing, it's just hosted on our property. Takes up a lot of my time and I use a lot of melatonin, so I'm doing this for our community, I'm not doing it for myself and I'm not doing it for our company, it's for the community and I I hope all of you, I think, understand that. I know some of you are part of it and Angelita who's here last night or not tonight was helped down at the event, I know Dave helped with Trash at the event and I know last year, I'll say I appreciate the words afterwards that you shared, Dave, that you didn't vote for it last year and that's okay. We did have a resume last year and this year, after we met down there, you said you were a fan of it, so I appreciate that. I would like to more than ask you, I would like to leave it in your hands, let you come together as a team and figure out what's the best way to partner. Any questions?
I have some questions. So how many barbecue teams were out last year at your event?
Five teams is what was registered with KCBS. Interesting how they do it, so as the KCBS event, which is a Sunday event, it's thirty-five teams. That's based on a kitchen, that one team out of a kitchen. But like for the SCA, every one of those members can actually individually register for that side of it. Hundred registered. For the actual steak turn-in, and there's a few people that show up just for that, but most of them are coming into that big pot of the end.
Okay, and how many states were represented?
I don't have that exact answer, but I know we had Kansas and we had Texas, Utah, California, Idaho, Washington. I know those for sure, I know we've already have all of those states. I just told the day of another team coming out of Salt Lake that I've never even heard of. I don't handle all the registrations, Mike White, who is gentleman that helps me with this. He is, he's the best damn barbecue sauce that he owns, he handles all that registration process. I should say he oversees it, KCBS and SCA is who handles it, because it's through their system.
Okay, I also just want to, for everybody else present here, is this an event open to the public or is it a ticketed event?
Saturday, it's free to the public. That's a recommendation that was given to us, as west coast does not know much of barbecue competition is. You know, Kelsey would know coming from Texas what that is, because that's a very big thing down there as you move east and then south. At some point, hopefully next year, we can turn this into an event or we can charge to get in. But at this point, we need, we need people to taste it and see it and see what this really is.
So as the the city, I know that part of the conversation last year in committee, because this idea went to committee last year and a process or proposal on how to handle events and how to handle giving money to events was never finalized, so I'm hoping that if there is a motion today, that it includes finalizing a process or policy. So part of that, that we had a discussion on is when it's open to the public, it seems like it's more reasonable to give it, give to these kinds of events, so we're, we appreciate the fact that it's open to the public. And I know as your event gets off on, gets bigger, that, you know, things might change. I also had a question as far as when, when these things happen and do you coordinate with other groups with here within the community? Is this more of a community event or is it just a radiator supply event? So I know you say you, you don't want it to be a radiator supply event, maybe you can expand on that a little bit more.
Correct, yeah, and the first thing, I'm not asking for a motion today, I'd like you to not knee jerk on this, but think about it and just make a good decision. Yeah, it's very open, last year, just in parking, I think there was right at thirty-five hundred to four thousand dollars that was given to the Sweet Home High School Athletic Department. We are looking, this is, again, this is about building something for Sweet Home, so whoever we can partner with, and there's some neat things, kind of even on the fringes of that, I had one team out of Washington say, can we build a smoker? And can we sell raffle tickets and you give the money to somebody, a vets type club in Sweet Home, Vets Association? And then we just raffle it off at the end of it and they're just giving that. And so there's some, some neat things even from the teams that we're seeing coming, which is just, I don't know, to me, I feel that special when you don't see that a lot of events where they come in, they want to help out our community.
Yeah, so I see in this packet that you've given to us that Icebox social media and marketing email and analytics are two point one million? Yeah, impressions? Yeah? And how many states would you say Sweet Home was marketed in, in preparation for this event last year and maybe this year? Every state? Every state? So our name, Sweet Home, is being advertised within the entire United States? And in Mexico? Okay. So for me, I, I think the event is good for Sweet Home. And I think it would be helpful for us as a city to have our logo on those things. So I'm interested in supporting it, I know that we are limited on funding. And we are interested in in-kind type of participation as far as things like that go. So I don't know if if there's going to be further questions from the councillors. I know that when we partner with somebody, we would like to make sure that we have a good relationship with them. So as you know, there's been some tensions sometimes, some things. And we would love it that if you have any issues with the city council, that you would come to us directly. And we will do the same for you. Okay? So, and I would like to entertain any more questions from other councillors.
Oh, Madam Mayor, I would like to see us through the fifteen thousand like we did last year. And I also want to say, I don't think I volunteered, but I did help bring down the alcohol consumption. I did contribute to that, but I'd like to see us do option one with the fifteen thousand again. Thank you.
So.
I'll just say if I can, I appreciate that, but I think it would be wise to have council as a team discuss that too.
So we can't discuss that outside of this because it would be a quorum. And we have our conversations in front of everybody unless it has to do with a personnel issue or something like that. Crazy, I know, but it's fair and it's honest and it's the way it has to be. So I really like the comments that our mayor said, I think she's spot on, did a great job in asking the right things. I also believe that an in-kind contribution is fiscally responsible and whatever that looks like, your needs or the way that we can help you be and responsible to community. We also have an obligation to consider the needs of tourism, PR, those things, you're absolutely right about that, that's, that is important. But maybe you don't have it under gold star supporter members partnership or bronze, maybe we're only iron. But at the same time, I know we got some really heavy lifting to do and a lot of things coming down the pike. And trying to balance all of that is really important. And we want to, we see the potential of what your dream is, but at the same time, we need to be careful. And that we could make a contribution of say five thousand dollars, coupled with the in-kind, get us closer to there. And then that way, we have the money to meet those needs, because I think you'd be really surprised, some of the things that are coming up. And because I know my committee is working really hard and we're doing a lot of things, it's very exciting. But at the same time, having this open to the public is really important, so thank you. I am not quite ready to make a motion yet, but I'd like to hear from the other councillors.
I actually think it's great to have something that promotes our community. I think it's great as we talk about tourism and what we need to do to bring Sweet Home to the map. I brought to our city managers just a discussion that one of the things we don't have in place is a formal process. And that's something we should have, not only just for your, your promotion, but a process for every promotion that would come to the city for tourism. And that's something I think we need to have in place. So because you set a presence, if you give for one, you gotta give for all. So, you know, it kind of leaves us wide open, because somebody else might want to bring a promotion, which is benefits tourism to the community, no doubt. But they may go say, I want fifty thousand, you know, we don't have a formal process, we need that. But I think we do need to put something in place and contribute and do something for promoting. You know, I can speak on that, I, I agree with that, I know systems and processes within our company are excellent tools. I was told that after last year what happened, I'm just going to be honest and transparent. Was told to not come back here, but I did not, I was not planning on that until Kelsey actually encouraged me here a month ago to come back, speak to you. And so that's when I changed, I'm later than last year, last year it was in February, March that we spoke to you. So that's why it's so late, is she encouraged me to come back to you. So that's why I'm here and I yeah, I would love to see a system and a process, and if the system or process says this doesn't work, that's great, that's your system and your process. So I would rather you guys have a system and a process moving forward and then weave it into that.
Let's meet you in the middle.
See how it goes.
Let's meet you in the middle, we asked for the stars and maybe we'll get the moon. I'd like to make a motion that we contribute as a partner, five thousand dollars with in-kind support to this event. And with that, I'd also add that we continue working towards a process to be able to do these kind of things. And as we don't have that right now.
What's the in-kind, so maybe staff can explain to us what type of in-kind the city can offer to this event?
There are a few things that we could potentially offer, one could be additional marketing, I mean, it wouldn't be to the extent that they're already doing, but there could also be parking. Yes. So we can offer parking both and space at the water treatment plant, parking at some of our other parking lots. And then this actually is within my authority too, to continue to negotiate with radiator supply and discuss what other types of in-kind pieces could be helpful that would still be more on the operational and in-kind side.
I think this event is good for our community, I'm sorry, there's a motion on the table and I'm waiting for.
Madam Mayor, before we, before we go to the second, you know, we're pushing to get our downtown stuff where we want it to be, and we're talking about fifteen thousand dollars here. It's, it's a good thing, it is, I just think it's too much money and I'll, I'll second that motion, by the way. That's just what I feel, okay?
So we have a motion and a second on the table, is there any further discussion regarding the matter? Because I really appreciate the event you brought to the community, you and JNC Barbecue and Best Damn Barbecue Sauce, all three of you guys working together. Are there, is there any further discussion regarding the motion on the table?
I think the city should do more. It's a huge event, brings a lot of people to town. And it's free to people that live in Sweet Home. And I think the city should, would benefit by giving more money.
And as I was encouraged, I'm just going to encourage, I know you have a budget committee, sounds like they have some say at times and maybe I was misled with that. But I'm learning as I get older, I don't like to knee jerk and that's why I encouraged. It doesn't have to be a decision tonight.
Well. We have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, we need to call for a vote. The motion on the table is for five thousand plus in-kind, plus a process that evaluates events, is that what I understand? Okay, so Julie, would you please call for the vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Reluctantly, yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Yes.
Did you have any further thing you wanted?
No, I thought you were finalized, nope, thank you.
There's six, six votes of yes and no, nays, and you have the full council endorsing your event.
It's happened in the past, so let's move forward, I hope to see a system by next year, because I know that'll work.
Yes. Thank you, Will, for.
Appreciate it, and I hope to see some logos.
Yeah.
Right direction to who to contact starting tomorrow, so we can get your name out there.
Kelsey, but thank you for coming forward, I know that took a lot of courage, so thank you for being here. So moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have second reading of ordinance bills. Ordinance bill number nine.
Ordinance bill number nine for twenty twenty-three, ordinance number blank, Sweet Home ordinance amending chapter four, the city of Sweet Home comprehends the plan and adopting a housing needs analysis.
Thank you. Any questions of council? I will entertain a motion for the third reading at our next meeting.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second, Julie, roll call please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, six eyes and no nays. Next item on the agenda, ordinance bill number ten for a second reading by title.
Ordinance bill number ten for twenty twenty-three, ordinance number blank, and ordinance amending the official zoning map.
Any questions of council regarding ordinance bill number ten? I will entertain a motion to move this on to the third reading at our next meeting.
So moved, second.
I have a motion and a second, Julie, roll call please. Julie, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes, that's six eyes and no nays to move that on to the third meeting, our next meeting. Because this is a shortened council meeting, I am adjourning the meeting now so we can move into our work session.